Sixty five thousand dollars. The there was action taken, a motion to approve this settlement and agreement was made by trustee Marquez. And the second in by trustee Lee and the vote was unanimous in favor. On the other two items, three point two and three point three, the board received information and gave guidance. Okay, welcome. Good evening. It's as said before, the March twelfth twenty twenty five meeting of the Redwood City School District Governing Board. Bienvenidos si requiere interpretación o español por favor llama el nueve siete ocho nueve nueve cero cinco uno tres siete. Y presione ocho tres siete siete cero cuatro uno y el signo de numero. Si asiste a la reunión en persona solicite un transmisor situado al fondo de la sala. All right, again, welcome. All members of the public, our partners in education, and the board encourages you to participate and provide comments of on issues of concern, regardless of whether they are on the agenda. To speak, I see that many of you already know this, but I'm going to say it anyways. Fill out a speaker's card. You can find him in the back of the room. If you're here in person, or there's an online sheet if you're online in Zoom. And you can do that. If you fill out a card, just be sure to bring them up to Evelyn and hand it to her. And if you're addressing a subject that's listed on the agenda, we'll call you at the time that the item is being considered. But if the issue is not on the agenda, we'll call you up shortly, just during the oral communications part. And then, to be fair to all speakers, we're going to limit public comments to three minutes per person, per topic, unless otherwise noted. Okay, on to the agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda? Okay, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move we approve the agenda.
All right, all in favor? Aye. Okay, then we will move on to oral communication. I'm going to look through the speaker's card. This is, this is one that filled out online as well. Online, okay. Ryan, okay, and. Okay, great. Then I'm going to start with Noah Gasper. Hold on. Yeah, that, here we go. There's a button to turn the microphone on. And then, Rick, do you do the timeline? iPhone's got it. Okay, great. And then, so you'll have three minutes. There's a timer in front that you should be able to see from the screen.
Hi, I'm Noah. I'm a parent of a child who's going to be attending Orion TK starting next year. Very excited about that. But I'm concerned about the aftercare situation on campus. There are two approved on-campus aftercare providers, Play Care, Playthrive and Catalyst. And Playthrive right now doesn't have classroom space, as I understand it, for TK. So there's a chance that none of the TK students will get into Playthrive. And Catalyst only starts for children at four years and nine months old. My daughter will be just over four years when she starts, so she won't be eligible for that. So there will be potentially no on-campus aftercare options for her. Don't know what the right solution is to this, but would love to get the board's help in finding some options for her, whether classroom space for Playthrive. Or some change that allows Catalyst to operate younger ages or some other solution altogether. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Noah, for bringing this up. Dr. Baker, did you have? I think that's the only one for this one. Oh, no, I'm sorry. You're right. There are two. Sorry, sorry. The next speaker would be Haichin Yang.
This one? Oh, okay, okay. Good evening, school board members. I'm a parent of a child entering TK at Orion Alternative this fall. And I want to express my deep concern about the lack of aftercare options for TK students. Like many working families, we rely on full daycare to meet our professional responsibilities. Without on-campus aftercare, we are forced to consider private preschool options, despite wanting to participate in Redwood City's public school system. This issue disproportionately impacts working families. Many of us cannot simply adjust our work schedules and transport four-year-olds off-site for care creates safety and logistical challenges, especially for the youngest students in the district. My child will have just turned four, needs the consistency and security of staying on campus. Universal TK was designed to expand access to early education, but without reliable aftercare, it unintentionally excludes families who need full day coverage. A TK spot without aftercare is not a real option for many of us. I urge the board to open additional classrooms at the district's facilities to accommodate all students and to arrange for the necessary janitorial services to support this expansion. Additionally, aftercare services, including heritage schools and private aftercare, must be extended to include children who are four years and above, in alignment with Universal TK. This would ensure a seamless, accessible aftercare option for all families. I strongly encourage you to prioritize these site-specific solutions, whether through district facilities, partnerships with local providers, or expanded on-campus programs. The district must act now to ensure Universal TK is truly accessible to all families. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Haichin, for raising this as well. And Dr. Baker, I know you wanted to respond.
Yes, we've received a lot of information, a lot of emails in regard to this issue, and Ms. Chen has been working on it quite diligently and has responded to some of the emails. So tonight, I'd like to have a chance to respond also, also because I've been on those emails. So as the board is well aware of that we are fully committed to supporting the Orion Alternative Expanded After-School Program across the district. These programs are an extension of the school day, providing students with enrichment, academic support, structured activities, and not just supervision. The principal is already working closely with the Department of Maintenance, Operations and Transportation to explore additional opportunities. There are some challenges that we continue to work through. Orion's enrollment continues to grow, and the campus soon could be nearing capacity. Finding dedicated areas for after-school programs while maintaining high-quality learning spaces during the school day is a challenge. Many of our after-school program partners are struggling to hire enough qualified employees to expand offerings. Programs serving younger students such as TK require additional staffing due to specific licensing and ratio requirements. Opening and maintaining additional spaces for after-school program depends on custodial staffing. Our custodial team operates under a union contract, which sets limits on work hours and responsibilities. These are contractual obligations and the district must follow. We remain committed to finding solutions that balance program expansion with the operational realities of our facilities, staffing, and contractual obligations. We have been meeting with Catalyst and Playthrive, both are private entities that are at the Orion site. And if everything works as well as we think it will, and I'm looking at Martin, because the Martins are Director of Maintenance, Operation, Transportation. There is one more meeting that is going to occur tomorrow. With that being said, we hope to have a response by Monday morning on the additional classroom spaces for Playthrive and Catalyst, and also looking at renegotiating contracts. Because that's going to have an additional cost on the district for the additional custodial staff. So we, it's not that we have not been working on it. It's not that Mrs. that Ms. Chen has not been aware of it. As I said previously, she has responded to these emails, and I would like to respond tonight. Thank you.
And then we do have one more speaker for oral communication, Michelle Strobe. And it just occurred to me as I was reading through this that you might be talking about. TK as well. Yeah, sorry about that. I didn't see TK in the subject, but then I'm like, oh, maybe it is. All right, thanks. Okay, but if you could turn the microphone.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you so much for having me. Thank you so much for the update, Dr. Baker. I appreciate that. And in that, I will not read my prepared note. I do want to thank everybody here on the board. My name is Michelle Strobe. I'm a parent of a kindergartner who will attend Orion next year. Also hear about the aftercare situation that we understand is very difficult right now for many parents, especially working parents. Thank you for the note. We definitely know that you guys are working so hard, as well as Principal Winnie. I know it's really difficult. Education right now is very tumultuous. Public education is very tumultuous. There's a lot of different funding situations that we understand. So thank you for the update. Thank you for working really hard. And I do want to let you know that, you know, we parents are here. I know this is a much higher level situation than we, but we are here. We would like to support in any way we can. And thank you for continuing to work on this. We do want to make sure that we have the space available so that the spots are able to be filled for the TK and the kindergarten parents, so, or the children. I'm sorry. So thank you for everything that you do.
All right. Thank you, Michelle, and to all three speakers for your involvement. Let's jump to the next one, which is information. Okay, so this is nine point one. We're going to have a discussion of parcel taxes.
Oh, so we're going Jeremy Howser. I'm going to ask you to come to the podium. Jeremy is going to give us an overview of the possibility of a parcel tax, whether we have a really great group of citizens that are working on a citizen initiative. That would be one way to go with a parcel tax. And then there's also another matter in which the district would handle the parcel tax. So at this point in time, Jeremy's going to give us a little overview of what each of those could look like, and then also some more information regarding polling too. So Jeremy, take it away.
Thank you, Dr. Baker, and thank you, members of the board, for having me. My name is Jeremy Howser. I'm a partner with Team Civics. I have some slides to go along with this presentation. I don't know if those are in front of you all currently. I cannot see them, so we're gonna, if I click this, will they move them forward?
No, let me, hold on, hold on, I'm gonna. It's, it's my, you're, they were sent to me. No, it's not. I, I, I. Yeah, yeah, let me get it to you real quick, Rick. Have to download it. Did you send to him? Don't read. Oh, yeah. Hold on. Thank you, David.
Beautiful. And if I click this, I assume it'll move forward, or I can also hit you with the next slide if that's easier.
He's going to, he will do it.
Yeah, I think so. Next slide, and he'll. Let's do it. Yeah, the old-fashioned way. I love it. Well, let's go to the next slide, Ben. Thanks for bearing with me. Again, Jeremy Howser, I'm a partner with Team Civics. We are a communications and consulting firm that specializes specifically in working with school districts and other public agencies and exploring the feasibility of funding measures. We've had the pleasure of working right here in Redwood City School District for many, many years. I think my first measure with you all was Measure T in 2015, a bond measure, to help bring some beautiful facilities to your campuses. Most recently, you've worked with my business partner, Joy Coomer, on some successful measures and wanted to spend some time tonight talking to you all about parcel taxes one-on-one and kind of understanding your options available to you as you look to bring more revenue into your schools. Next slide, please. Perfect. There we go. So tonight's presentation is really about the district-sponsored process for placing a parcel tax measure on the ballot. But I do understand that there has been a group of concerned citizens and parents in your community who've been organizing around potentially placing a citizens initiative parcel tax on the ballot, which I think is a really great thing to be doing. And so I thought I would spend a few minutes just speaking about the differences between the two processes for placing a measure on the ballot, and then really focus our conversation on what you as a district specifically can do, because I think you'll find pretty quickly that your options are limited if the citizens initiative process is to move forward. So the biggest difference between the two approaches to placing a measure on the ballot are really with the voter approval needed for success. So a citizens initiative, if properly qualified for the ballot, requires fifty percent plus one to be approved and enacted. A district-sponsored parcel tax, if you were to place it on the measure by an act of your board, would need two-thirds support in order to be approved. Now, the biggest differences between these two measures are really what you as a district can and cannot do. And by definition, a citizens initiative parcel tax is of and by the citizens. What that means is that you as a district cannot be involved whatsoever. You cannot use public resources to fund polling. You cannot use public resources to retain legal counsel and actually write the initiative itself. You cannot be involved in the planning, and you cannot communicate about the funding need that a parcel tax through this initiative process would aim to address. Now, conversely, through the more traditional district-sponsored route, you as a district can and should be involved in all of those steps in the process. You can and should conduct polling to understand the feasibility of a measure. If it were on the ballot today, would two-thirds of voters support it? You can retain legal counsel and consultants in order to write the actual resolution itself and qualify it for the ballot. And you can provide information to your constituents about the funding needs in your schools and how a parcel tax might address those needs. Now, you cannot advocate for the passage for or against a measure, but you can lay out the facts for them and help them understand what's at stake in your election. And then lastly, the taxing agency itself is different between these two processes. Now, the citizens initiative process is actually not available to school districts. So if citizens were to qualify a measure for the ballot, they would have to do it through the city of Redwood City and not through your district. Now, that presents an interesting challenge, because as I'm sure you're all aware, your boundaries do not align with your city's boundaries. And that would really cut two ways. First, there would be about twenty percent of the city of Redwood City who could vote for your measure, would be taxed by your measure, but would not receive its benefits, because they would be in the Belmont Redwood Shores School District. The other side of that, there'd be about a third of your constituents who are outside of city limits, who could not vote on the measure, would not be taxed under the measure, but would still receive the benefits because they are within your district. Now, again, through the district-sponsored process, much more straightforward, you are the agency placing the measure on the ballot. You are the taxing agency. You would collect the tax, and it would be applied uniformly to all of your taxpayers within your district boundaries. Let's go to the next slide, please. So a few key features, just to kind of set the stage for what we're talking about. As I mentioned, when the district is the agency placing a measure on the ballot, it requires two-thirds voter approval in order to be passed. You can actually place it on any ballot, not just the regularly scheduled elections that will be occurring next year in June and November. You can call an election specifically within your district boundaries to vote yes or no on a parcel tax. Parcel taxes have a lot of flexibility of use. Most commonly, we see them used for staff salaries, teachers, academic programs, really as close to the classroom as it can be. Unlike a bond measure, you can actually offer exemptions for a parcel tax specifically to seniors over the age of sixty-five and individuals with disabilities who receive SSI or SSDI. And then you do have the option to include citizens oversight and other accountability provisions in your measure to help the public feel better about their investment that they're making in the schools. Next slide, please. Now, with a parcel tax, you also have structural flexibility with how we can build and craft a measure. Under state law, a parcel tax must be applied uniformly to every parcel in your district. So that means that every parcel pays the same rate. But the rate itself can take a few different forms. Now, most traditionally, I'd say about ninety-five percent of districts in the state of California who have parcel taxes have that first flat per parcel rate, where every single parcel in the district pays the same exact rate. For you all, it's eighty-five bucks currently. You could pick any number, and that would be applied uniformly, whether you're in a thousand-square-foot, single-family home or a fifteen-thousand-square-foot warehouse. Recently, there's been a trend in the Bay Area, and we've been working with all the districts to do this, to explore parcel tax measures that are based on a square footage of buildings on a parcel, right? So the underlying square footage rate is the same for every parcel, but the overall tax burden is different. Obviously, if you are in a single-family home, you're going to be paying significantly less than that warehouse that I mentioned previously, than an apartment building, et cetera, because the tax is based on the square footage of your building specifically, not your lot size. And then, third, there is a bit of a hybrid approach that starts with an underlying square footage rate and then puts a cap on the rate that any one parcel could pay. This is popular in a lot of districts like yours with very large commercial entities who, without a cap, could be paying significantly high rates. We've worked in Alameda Unified School District recently, as well as Mountain View Wismann and Burlingame School District to pursue measures of this approach, where there's an underlying tax rate, but there is a cap on the amount that any one parcel could pay. Within that flexibility of the measure, you also can include annual adjustments so that your tax rate can keep pace with inflation. You can tie those adjustments directly to a consumer price index. You can pick a percentage, or you can do a combination where you tie it to an index and then have it not to exceed of a certain percentage. And then, lastly, you can include a sunset, i.e. if this measure is enacted, it will be in place for eight years, or you can have it approved until ended by voters, which in effect would be in perpetuity. Next slide, please. Now, zeroing in specifically on square footage parcel taxes and why I think it would be a unique opportunity for your district. First and foremost, the number one benefit without question is that we see significantly lower tax burdens on single-family homeowners, right? Under a flat rate, if you're, again, you're in a fifteen-hundred-square-foot home, and you're paying a hundred bucks, the two-hundred-unit apartment complex three doors down is also paying that same flat rate, right? But under a square footage model, you can more equitably distribute the tax burden throughout your entire community. That also means you can likely generate significantly more revenue than you would under a flat-rate model, right? If you're realizing more revenue from those larger properties, that's all benefit and upside for your district to help you, again, pay teachers, support academic programs, and make sure you're providing the best education you can to your students. And I also do think the possibility of a cap on that rate is really beneficial. If you have a larger business community who might be tax-sensitive and a little tax-averse, paying, you know, six-digit tax bill every year, you can implement a rate onto that tax rate or a cap onto that tax rate so that you're not putting an undue burden on those larger property types. Next slide, please. So this slide kind of outlines our vision for the district-sponsored parcel tax approach. We've developed it over many years and hundreds of successful elections. We've implemented it right here in your community many times on many successful measures. And it really comes down to four key milestones, three of which are marked in blue. And they're marked in blue because they can and should be funded by the district. Now, the first step, and really the step that we're talking about tonight, is the feasibility assessment. We would never recommend placing a measure on the ballot if we thought it could not be successful, right? So before we expend significant resources, writing the measure itself, communicating about the need and preparing for the ballot, we want to understand at a very basic level, is this measure going to be feasible, yes or no? And then also understand a little bit more about why your voters might be supportive, yes or no. Now, assuming we do get positive news from that poll, we would proceed to the following steps in the process. The next step would be awareness building about why you're pursuing a measure. Again, as a district, you cannot advocate for the passage of the measure, but you can provide factual information about your budget realities, about how a parcel tax might address those realities, why you're deciding to structure it the way that you are, and really solicit feedback from your community as you begin preparing a measure for the ballot. And then the third and final step to be undertaken by the district is the actual preparation of the measure itself. In order to qualify for the ballot, we would need to bring a resolution back to you all as a board, calling an election and actually including this language of the measure itself. And there are different deadlines to qualify for ballots, depending on what election you wind up choosing. We would obviously undertake that entire process before our measures on the ballot. Now, at that point, there's a bit of a passing of the baton, because, as I've said many times, the district cannot advocate for the measure. But we know a parcel tax and taxes in general require robust advocacy campaigns in order to get over the finish line. So all that work of knocking on doors, putting up lawn signs, collecting endorsements, sending direct mail, all of that would have to be privately coordinated and fundraised in that final step, the independent campaign. And when you all are deciding to place a measure on the ballot, I think a big part of your calculus is to look around the room and say, is there a group of parents who's willing to take this on and get this measure over the finish line? And based on what I've heard, I do think that group would likely manifest itself if you decided to move forward in this process. Next slide, please. So I wanted to share a few of the upcoming election dates that are available to you as a district specifically to call an election. You'll see two dates on here that should look hopefully familiar. It's June second and November third of next year. Those are the gubernatorial primary and general elections next year. Although you'll see some other dates up here as well of the special elections that you can call. And you'll see the requisite filing date by which you would need to submit a resolution to the county in order to qualify for that ballot. You'll also see a line here under the June second election. That line indicates any election that you could seek. And if you were successful, your parcel tax could show up on the tax rolls starting in the twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven fiscal year. I.e., you can start collecting increased revenue on July one of twenty-twenty-six. I've bolded the June second primary because, from my perspective, that seems like a good target election. You would have until March sixth of next year in order to qualify for the ballot. There's a lot of work to be done, as you've seen before that date. But I think it gives you enough time and flexibility to prepare, and also, again, get that revenue in. So on July one, you can start realizing the increase, should you be successful. Next slide, please. So again, I walked through that four-step process, but really tonight, what I want to talk about and I want to focus our time on is the first phase, feasibility, right? Because until we commit to anything further down the road, to placing a measure on the ballot, to picking an election, we first have to know what is feasible. And so the basic goal of a feasibility study is to get the tough questions answered upfront, right? And those tough questions take a lot of different forms. First and foremost, is this feasible? If this, if this election were held today, would we reach two-thirds? Yes or no? But within that, what tax rate it would be feasible within your community? Is a square footage rate possible? Do we need a sunset? Do we need a cost-of-living adjustment? We can use a feasibility study to help you better prepare and really go into this process with eyes wide open, so that you can understand what your, your community is willing to support in terms of a measure. Within that feasibility study, we also can ask them about priorities of funding. So I'm sure you all have ideas on how to spend parcel tax funding. I think it's important to make sure that your ideas align with your community, right? We also can understand if your community is aware of your funding needs, and if any controversy exists or any headwinds are out there that we need to know about. And I think what's also really important is that a poll gives us an understanding of the greater context in which it is occurring, right? Elections do not occur in a vacuum. They occur amidst a backdrop of a greater political landscape. I think we all know, if we are tuned into the news recently, there's been a lot of talk about government and public education and how money for those services are perceived. I think it's really important that we get data back in the current environment to understand how those national conversations might affect your chances locally. Next slide, please. So why am I up here today advocating to start this process now and not a year from now, two years from now, six months from now? I think first and foremost, a lot has changed in your community, in the state, in the nation, since you all conducted polling previously. Your last poll was conducted in May of last year. I know it doesn't feel like that was that long ago, but I think we all could recognize that the national landscape which we live in today was a lot different then than it is now. Your previous polling did not look at a square footage-based parcel tax option. As I mentioned, this has become increasingly popular in the Bay Area. We saw a lot of success with it in the fall. And I do think your district would be a good use case for it. And I think it may seem like that you have time, but those election opportunities in twenty-twenty-five and twenty-twenty-six are going to come up quickly. And again, if you are able to be successful in one of those elections, you could realize that increased revenue from parcel tax in time for that fiscal year next year, which I know would be a big boon for your district. And with that, I think that was my last slide. I'm happy to answer any questions that you all might have.
Thank you, Jeremy, for the presentation. Really appreciate it. We actually do have a couple of public speakers. Maybe we could take those and then we can bring you back up to participate in the discussion and questions. So the first one is in person, it's Carlo Contavalli.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for introducing me and Carlo Contavalli. I'm a horrible speaker, so please forgive my presentation, my commentary. But I'm a parent of two children in the Redwood City School District. I've been one of the proponents of the Citizen Initiative and I've been trying to gather community support for adding this parcel tax. We heard at this meeting about problems with aftercare. We heard about trying to gather, trying to cover additional costs for custodial staff. Every year we struggle with teacher shortages. Our cash scores are not improving. We badly need more support for our teachers, our classrooms and our kids. And instead of getting more funding, this year we had incredible budget cuts. And we know that more are coming. We had to make some very hard choices, like been at multiple meetings where we were discussing what to cut, what not to cut and the pain that would cause in the community. Finding more funding, I think is an urgent matter. It is not something that we can wait on. And we know, we have seen that square footage based initiatives where citizens and businesses pay based on the size of their property and it's not a flat tax that everyone pays. Regardless of having a tiny apartment or like a big huge mansion, like square footage allows like different families to pay, to contribute differently based on what they own, based on what they're capable of contributing. Those initiatives have been incredibly successful in the Bay. And multiple districts have done this at the past elections and were able to raise a significant amount of money. So the sooner we notice is a viable option in Redwood City, I think the better it is. Like it gives us the option to pick in which election to put the parcel tax. It gives us the option, like as Jeremy was mentioning, there's even the option of calling an extra vote for a ballot. It's on the table. It's probably not the wise thing to do, but again, the sooner we notice it's a viable option, the better it is. If you guys, I think that's it for me.
Thank you, Carlo, and thank you for your advocacy. Our next speaker is online, it's Jessica Shade. All right, Jessica. Yep, there you go.
Hi, everyone. I'm one of the parents working on the Citizens Initiative with Carlo. And as Jeremy said, we are not working with the district. The Citizens Initiative is totally separate. And we're really just doing this because our kids need the funding. You know, we've all experienced the cuts the district has had to make. And we know that more cuts are coming in the future. And honestly, we aren't particular about how a parcel tax gets done. If there's clearly over two thirds support, the district route is a much more straightforward way to get a parcel tax on the ballot. But if the district does a poll and it still doesn't show a decent margin over that two thirds third support that it needs, then we're still going to proceed with the Citizens Initiative despite all the challenges that Jeremy mentioned. We know those issues, we're working on creative ways to address them. Also, I know there are a lot of incoming TK and K parents in the room. We'd love for you to get involved. You can, if you're there in person, you can just grab Carlo. Or you can email me, my email is j e s s h a d e at gmail. That's j e s s h a d e at gmail.com. And but long story short, we're supportive of any way that we can get a parcel tax for our students regardless of whether it is a district initiative or a citizens initiative. We just know this is critically important. Thanks.
Thank you, Jessica, for your, also for your advocacy here on other issues around the district. And our last speaker is Adina Olson, also on Zoom.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
We can, yes.
My name's Adina Olson. I am a parent of two kids at Orion. And I'm also working with Jessica and Carlo on the Citizens Initiative. So really, I'm just here to echo what has already been said, which is we, we just really are hoping to get some funding, additional funding for our public schools. I know that I, as a parent, I have a TKer and a first grader. Have, I've been on the PTO and I've seen exactly what the cuts mean for our school. And it just, it does cause a lot of stress on our parents and our families. And you know, we just want our kids to have funding. So either way, whether it's a parcel tax that comes from the Citizens Initiative and I am here to help make that happen as best as I can. Or if it's through the district initiative, which it sounds like, and I don't know all the ins and outs of this, but it sounds like that would be an easier path to go down. Either way, like, you know, we're just advocating to get that funding. But if there is a path through the district, that would be great. Anyways, that's all I have to say. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Adina. Appreciate your comments. Okay, so tonight is just information.
And a discussion among the board of our direction. And then we have Jeremy here for any questions.
Yeah, and then if we were to actually decide that something, we would come to a future board meeting where we would have a vote on it. So it's really just a discussion and information. Does anyone have questions for Jeremy or comments that they'd like to make?
I've got one question for my own understanding. If it becomes a district led initiative or district led parcel tax, could we still get outside funding to support some of these initial costs or is this cost coming from the district budget?
From a legal perspective, I think it's really important that these are completely two separate processes. It's either the district track or the citizens track. And if the district were to move forward, that doesn't mean the citizens couldn't keep organizing because again, by definition, they have to be separate. So there's really no communication there other than, you know, they're more than welcome to voice their support for the district proposal. So I would say during the initial steps, no. However, if the district were to place a measure on the ballot, it would likely require a pretty robust independent campaign, which would require private dollars, private resources, private volunteers, all of that.
So if we were to move, yeah, just interject a bit. So Jeremy, if we were to move forward with the polling, then that would be a district expense.
Correct.
So does that, does that help?
Yeah.
And we would publicly report out on the results of that polling, so that would be made available to the other.
Exactly.
So one concern I would have is like 2026 is pretty far away. I feel like we just started 2025, right? And you mentioned that a lot has changed since we did the last poll a year ago. The same is likely to be true that a lot is going to change in the next, you know, 12, 13, 14 months. Hopefully we don't go to war with Canada. So yeah, I'm wondering about timing for a poll, right? I love the chart of dates and especially the, the underlining there of like going out for the primaries in 2026. That seems like a good one with a clear date. And so like a work back plan, when is the right time to run a poll that would give us guidance? That we would have time to put everything together to be on the primary ballot for 2026? Is it really March 2025? Cause that feels way too early.
It probably would be too early, but there are a lot of steps in the process even before a poll is live, right? I think the earliest we could probably get a poll in the field if we started tomorrow would be May. So and again, with a square footage measure, there's a lot more work that has to go in on the front end before you even put your poll in the field, right? Because, you know, a flat rate is a pretty easy math equation, right? Eighty-five bucks times number of parcels gets you your revenue. Square footage, there's a lot of different variables that work into it and that process on the front end to decide, okay, what's our underlying rate going to be? Are we going to have a cap? Are we not? That process takes some time. So I think even if we were to start tomorrow, the earliest you'd probably get a poll in the field would be May. So I'm always of the mindset that you should keep your options open and, you know, give yourself the time so you can use it. But I definitely think that a poll in May of this year would be beneficial for a measure early next year, including a primary. Any other questions or comments?
Could you remind me, whenever we do go out for a polling, do we have the numbers upfront before people start voting, whether they choose, you know, option one or two or three?
Yeah, so the way that we structure a poll is we try to replicate an election environment as best we can. And so the key question that we ask in the poll is a sample 75 word ballot question. And in that ballot question, we would include a tax rate, duration, revenue raised, all of those details as well as the use of funds. And over the course of the poll, we actually ask, would you vote yes or no on this three different times? The first time is pretty much right upfront, so we can get a read of whether any information pro or con. If the election were held today, what does it look like? Then we provide a little bit more information to the listener. We tell them, you know, 10 different uses of funds. For example, we tell them potential positive arguments they might hear over the course of a campaign. And then we ask them again, okay, now that you've heard the uses of funds and some positive arguments, if the election were held today, would you vote yes or no on this same 75 word ballot question? And then we do the opposite and we ask potential negative arguments. Obviously, in the course of a campaign, there can be pros and there can be cons. We want to test the cons as well. We test a few different negative arguments and then we ask one final time. All right, now that you've heard the pros, you've heard the cons, if the election were held today, would you vote yes, right? And that gives us a pretty holistic view of your ceiling, your floor and what voters would, would support on the natural.
Questions, comments, anyone else? Did you need anything else from us?
Can you put that slide up with the dates, the timelines on it? After reviewing the slides that Jeremy sent and the conversations that I've had with Jeremy and us doing the budget reductions that we had to do for this school year and then we budget reductions last year. And when I saw this timeline, I kind of like, oh my gosh. But I really would like to see what, what the, what the community is thinking right now. And if it goes in that flavor of that we have their support, we have the Citizens Initiative, that those people have been working very, very diligently and thoughtfully, really wanting to get dollars for our district. I would really want to get the poll and if it's favorable, I would want to go June 2nd. I, you know, it took me a long time to come to this decision, believe me. Back and forth, back and forth. Do you know what that's going to mean? Yes, I know what it's going to mean. Been there, done that before. But we, I think we owe it to our, to our students, to our teachers, to our staff. If the polling is in a positive nature, we should do the, go out on June 2nd.
So last year when we ran this, what was the cost to run the polling? What was the total out of pocket for us?
Was it 45,000? Forty-five to fifty?
All right, that tells you two, three months process was sort of what I was hearing here. And when we, when we did it last time, last year, the number came back, was it with 61, 62? Something like that. And you know, it's 66.6 to go and pass, but we want some comfortable margin. So what do you say go, green light would be like 68, 69? What are we looking at for the cut point there?
As a general rule of thumb, yes, but you also get so many other contextual clues from the poll that I wouldn't want to give you a hard yes or no based on the number alone. I do think if you're in the ballpark, that's also helpful data too, right? Because what we're not going to be able to do in a poll is give them five different options and tell them to pick their favorite, right? Because that doesn't, that's not what the voting process is like. It's not, I get to pick one of five measures, right? So we kind of have to pick one based on our gut and our experience and go for it. But if the data comes back and we see in the poll that there's actually a lot of support in the community, but we just asked for too much. That's a helpful data point, right? And that would probably elongate the process because we would need to do some community outreach and engagement and get a better understanding as to why that tax sensitivity existed and understand if there was a path forward, it may be a lower dollar amount, right? So to answer your question, I would say 68 would be great. I've been with districts where we were at 65 and I recommended they go forward. I've been with districts where we were at 70 and I recommend they not, right? There's a lot of other contextual clues in that poll that I think kind of helped tell the whole story. And we can't really know that until we ask.
In the other situations where you've run this process, when they have gone to the ballot, have you historically seen like opposition, organized opposition campaigns?
Rarely, although we have. I will say that a really important part of this process, if you are to go forward with a square footage based measure is outreach and openness with the business community, right? I think that is by far the biggest likelihood of a source of opposition and they don't need to be. So I think, you know, when we worked in Alameda in 2016, we actually saw opposition from the State Charter School Association. And they teamed up with local businesses to oppose us. We were successful. Wouldn't recommend going into battle with that, those stakes we, you know, were able to overcome. But I do think it's really important that on the front end, the district do its work to, you know, engage with the business community, with parents, with everybody. Again, not to convince them to vote yes or to vote no, but to get a better understanding about their, their views of the district, their views of a potential measure and how you can be a good partner to them.
And then, so last year, we went through phase one of this, is that right? The feasibility and that was 45. I'm sure amounts will change, but what are, what are the rest of the parts of the process, at least for the district portion, look like in terms of magnitude?
The, the poll is definitely the biggest upfront cost, right? Because you're paying for the services we, I should have clarified, are not pollsters. We would partner with Brian Godby of Godby Research, who's done your polling for two decades. There would, there would be consulting expenses that are not near that magnitude. And then if we decided to send direct mail informational communications to voters, there would be that expense. But that's all up for discussion and would be a decision that we would make together. We wouldn't obviously unilaterally send something out without approval.
I feel like a good point was made that there's more acceptance of per square foot measures than there are of just like flat parcel measures. It makes an awful lot of sense for me, to me. I'm just curious, why, why didn't we poll for that last year?
I, I was not involved with the district process at that time, but I do believe that it was a lot less in vogue. I know it was a lot less in vogue with districts than it was, than it is today. You know, we had multiple districts on the ballot in November who gave it a shot, but they started their process in early 2023. So I think, again, I was not involved in that process, but it's my understanding that it was not as, it wasn't considered because it wasn't as common of a practice. We've now seen a lot of Bay Area districts take the leap and be successful with it. And so.
So we kind of played it a little conservative because we weren't sure how it would go and we maybe played it too conservative. And now we see that we should have gone that tack. Okay.
Yeah, thanks.
All right, great. So to sort of wrap up this item, I just wanted to get kind of a sense of like, obviously not making any decision tonight, anything there. But is there appetite for a future agenda item to discuss going forward on a feasibility study? I think, because we would have to take an action item to do it.
Feels like good data to have.
Yeah.
It's just where are people at with a dollar per square foot parcel tax?
Yeah.
And the other piece is that we have a group of parents that I'm assuming would get even larger if we were to put it on the ballot and say, say it came back with a rating that, you know, it's great, you should need to move forward with it. Because there's a lot of work that you need to have a good, solid group of community to really help you support this and get it across the finish line.
Yeah, and I mean, this is an important issue, right? I mean, injecting revenue back into the schools is, I mean, we're hearing the need from it. We heard it from our parent speakers tonight. We hear it just, you know, from the budget renewal process that we went through, we hear it from our community and. We hear it from our community and our schools. And we see the urgency for really needing to get this there. You know, the the one-time funds from the COVID nineteen pandemic really showed us what what could be done for student services when you're more fully funded. And, you know, now that those are gone, we do have to find other ways to be able to bring that revenue back. I do think that this is a good avenue for us to be pursuing.
Okay. So if I could bring something back, probably right after spring break, I'll work with Jeremy to see what that would look like. And also ask Jessica and Carlo to be involved with that also to assist me in that manner. And then we'll bring it back for a full discussion further. And then at that time, it would be an action item to go forward or not go forward with the polling.
Sounds good. Great. Perfect. All right, let's. Thank you, Jeremy. Appreciate that content. All right, let's move on to ten point one, which is the approval of the HVAC equipment purchase from Dalton and Carrier for the summer.
Good evening. Tonight joining us is Nicholson from VPS, our bond program manager, and Martin Savantes, our director of maintenance operations and transport, maintenance operations and transportation, who'll give a brief presentation and information on the procurement of HVAC units for our four school sites for our summer twenty twenty-six major S bond project. So with that, I'll hand it over to.
Yeah. Thanks for that introduction, Rick. Good evening, board, cabinet. I was going to do an introduction, but Rick did it great for me, so we'll just jump right in. If you could go two slides in for me. So I wanted to start with just a quick review of the scope of this project, both for the board and the community. So the first round of schools for this summer are four schools, Adelante Selby, Hoover, Roosevelt, and Taft. So the item tonight is to purchase the equipment for the HVAC upgrades for those schools. Currently, most of your units are heat and vent only. So part of the scope of this project is to replace those aging units that you could see in the photos here. They're mostly closet furnace units for the classrooms and add air conditioning to those units with upgraded controls. So if you could go to the next slide for me, please. And then you might ask, why do we want to purchase the equipment now? And if we're not installing until the summers? So for a couple of reasons. The first being schedule. If we want to stay on schedule for a summer install, a lot of this equipment has eight to ten week lead times. So we would like to place that order this month to stay on schedule for the summer install. The second reason is cost. We've already been notified by one of the manufacturers that have been proposed for this equipment, Dyken, that they are going to do their usual price increase for any orders placed after March twenty-seventh of eight to ten percent. And that does not include any possible tariff increase. So this is just their usual price increase that they do regularly. So there could be a possible increase in cost if some of the tariffs that have been talked about go through. So we would like to place this this month if the board approves tonight. So next slide, please. So this is just a summary of the equipment for approval tonight. I know the question was asked about why to manufacturers. So I'll start with Carrier. Carrier is the district's preferred manufacturer due to ease of maintenance. The maintenance staff here is familiar. It's easier to get parts from Carrier. So for the package units, which is where the heating, ventilation and air conditioning are all in one unit, we tried to stay with what the district's familiar with and the standard. But for the Dyken units, as like you saw in the image earlier, most of the classrooms are closet furnace units. So the mechanical engineer had to specify what we call split units, where the heating furnace is replaced in the closet and a separate condenser unit is placed on a rooftop or on the ground somewhere else. You got, most homes are built this way. And with the California's recent code change for refrigerant, Dyken was the only manufacturer that had split units that were ready for design and install for this summer. So that's why we went with Dyken. And we're proposing using piggyback contracts that I know the district has used in the past. Actually, at the last board meeting, an Omnia contract was approved for the portable AC units that will start getting delivered as early as next week, actually. And then Carrier uses a similar piggyback contract, CMAS. So next slide. I think so. Tonight is a recommendation of the approval to procure the HVAC equipment for both Dyken and Carrier to stay on schedule for summer install. And the last slide is just questions.
All right. Thank you for the presentation. Let's move on to questions.
Well, it's cold and rainy out there, so people might think that we've forgotten about hot summer days, but the board does not forget. So I am glad that we are moving forward with this to take proactive action and making sure that we are taking steps towards making sure that every single one of our classrooms ultimately ends up with a proper HVAC, although it's going to take us several steps to get there. This tonight seems like a very useful step in that direction. I happened to look up some of the equipment pricing on my own and the prices that we got bid out seem to be reasonable per that. So great to hear that portable units arriving next week.
Any other comments? No? Okay. Well, thanks again. I want, thanks VPCS, facilities and finance teams for putting this together. This is an action item, so I'll need a motion.
I move we approve the acquisition of these HVAC units.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Outstanding. Looking forward to the construction work this summer.
Awesome. Thank you.
Time for the Mustangs. Let's move on to eleven point one, the Henry Ford School Presentation for the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
So tonight we have Ms. Fennoff and Ms. Sanchez, who will be presenting the board presentation.
Oh, you need to turn your microphone on. Yeah, there's, yeah, perfect.
All right. Good evening, Board of Trustees and Cabinet members. Before I get started, I just want to acknowledge this, all the teachers that are here tonight. This is just speaks for itself, the kind of staff that I I work with, just amazingly dedicated. They're working weekends, they work nights, they go to their student games, they volunteer for our events. There's just an incredible staff. Thank you for being here. All right, we'll get started. Sorry. Oh, yeah. All right. Okay, so last year, as you can see, we were in TSI status for a couple of things, our chronic absenteeism for multiple groups. We have exited that for most, except for our English language learners, and I'll address the plan for that later. And our English language learner progress, we exited that. We actually were red, clearly, and we wanted to get to yellow, but we actually got to green. So it was very exciting. And we entered for ELA math with students with disabilities, so. L cap goal one, we all know this. Our suspensions are at zero percent, so we've we've met that goal, which is great. Chronic absenteeism is probably the biggest challenge facing Henry Ford. Collectively, we probably spent about two full days a week working on attendance. And as you can see, it hasn't been much of a dip. There's a whole slide on this. I'll get more into it later, but that's the data. And you can see our, you know, we went down a little, but not much and definitely discretion in our unhoused families and socially economically disadvantaged. Oh, pointed towards you, that's right. Okay. Skipping that one. Okay, well, our suspension rate is zero. Okay. Okay, chronically absent. So we have tried, you know, everything under the sun that we could think of, attendance wars, incentives, you know, letters to parents, phone calls, engagement meetings, SSTs. And eventually we we looked at the data. We took all of our chronically absent students. So there's about a hundred to twenty percent of our kids are missing a month or more of school, which I have kids to grade level if they're not in school, right, that much. So we put the addresses into Google Maps and tracked them and found that most of them are living one to two miles away in the Haws neighborhood, which school was closed, you know, and we have Haws students. So we held a meet your neighbor night and we seated, we invited all the families and we seated them by their neighbor with people that with are within walking distance. We even had a couple of families that live in the same apartment. We held it over in the YMCA by the Haws neighborhood, free dinner, raffle. We invited all a hundred families. We didn't have the greatest turnout, but what came out of the conversations we had with the families was transportation is the issue. A lot of them have to walk to school and a mile to two miles is too far if if it's raining or if one child is sick, they have to stay home if they're sick. So transportation is really a big, big issue. We kind of are going into the solution, but luckily I just found out today that we are going to be, there's a bus that we've been trying to get to use. It is for our overflow students that stops at Haws. It's a big bus and it only carries about ten kids. So we just got permission, exciting, and I was working with transportation. So thank you and Dr. Baker, everybody. We're going to be able to invite our families to use that bus if they need it. So I think that will make a huge difference. I did your part. See, you were supposed to talk through and talk about this. Gosh, I did her part. I was nervous. Here's marketing. Okay, so social emotional learning is, we've spent a lot of time and professional development around building relationships, using asset-based language, school-wide implementation of PBIS. For example, our referrals now, we're looking at the antecedent, what's causing the behavior instead of just consequences. Everyone on staff attended handle with care, just this first part of it, which is really, if you're a parent, I recommend it. It's all about your own triggers so that you can stay calm when your students are deregulated. So that's been really helpful. We have an amazing counselors and they push into the classroom and do SEL lessons. And our parents, once a month, push in and do Project Cornerstone. You know, the teachers at Henry Ford are all ten veteran teachers, strong classroom management, but they've really gotten to the point where they're building these relationships with the children. So last year, it was about fifty percent of our referrals were from the classroom, fifty percent were from the yard, and we're down to about ten percent from the classroom now. It's very rare to have a student sent to the office during instructional time. So that's been really exciting. And that's kind of freed us up to focus on the problem area, which is our yard. The behaviors are all minor behaviors, but you know, a lot of impulse control issues. So we knew that you can't really see it, but we mapped out the yard. So there's a station and one ball per game. Our PE teachers are spending time teaching the kids the rules, what to do if you don't agree, Rochambeau. And trying to have more engaging activities like we have these little scooter things, just more for them to do out there to keep them busy. Our counselor has a lunch club. Why don't you talk about the new? Well, we're also strategically placing our yard duty staff. We were looking at our whole yard and realizing where most of the behaviors are occurring and making sure that we're monitoring that area. And then we've been moving into tier two for PBIS and noticing, looking at trends of students who are repeatedly having to be re-taught behaviors for the yard or rules for the yard. And so right now we are trying out an idea of structured recess, which is where the students will go participate in a small group with a staff member, whether they're going to be, they're going to think about or talk about the harm that was done and what they did, like thinking outside of just themselves, but how did that affect our whole community? And then re-practice the behavior and then they're going to have fun, but not more fun than being at recess, of course. They're going to play a game where they have to follow rules with a person. And then they'll return back to the yard again and practice those skills. If they're not successful, then we'll repeat. And we've tried it. We've just started trying it and we're seeing positive results so far. Okay. All right. So our L cap goal, okay. And so we're looking at our reclassification rate. As you can see, our reclassification rate was, we didn't meet our goal. However, we did meet our goal with our students moving from the red to the green. And we reflected upon this and we realized that it just takes a few years for students to move from one level to another. It could be that we have many students that are at the emergent level of language acquisition. And knowing that our students have moved to the green, it makes us very hopeful. And we're anticipating that we're going to have more students reclassifying. So that's the same slide, right? It's the same information, the long-term English learners. So you can see our growth, that we went from twenty-six point six percent of our students moving up one level and up to the fifty-two point three percent, right? Okay. You start, doesn't it? Okay, so this year we really prioritized grouping and holding designated ELD every day. We use site fund so that our newcomer teacher is there full time. So she's working with all the newcomer students while the teachers are holding ELD, which also helps bring down class size. We had a SMART goal, school-wide, that seventy-five percent of our students would increase at least one level in the speaking portion of the test. There's, it's just one tech question. For example, there's a picture of a kid playing soccer and you say, what is he doing? And they say they're playing soccer. And you ask him why and they're like, what do you, what do you think? You know, are you crazy? So like, they didn't know how to answer it. So just teaching them to look for, you know, information in the picture to answer. And I mean, we didn't go up once, but we went away on that. So that really was helpful. Teachers are also dedicating at least one day a week during ELD to do test prep, not teaching how to take the test so much as familiarizing them with the formatting. Things like dictation, we don't really do dictation, but that's on the test. Making deduction for multiple question, multiple choice questions, these kind of skills. And we did that last year as well, which we is one of the reasons we think we saw such so much growth, just working on that. And we've also do a lot of integrated ELD. Our teachers really know their students. They know who their newcomers are. They know who their long-term language learners are, their littles. They provide structures, sentence frames, turn and talks, academic vocabulary. And so there's a lot of support happening throughout the day in addition to our integrated or designated ELD. Yes, at the beginning, I'd like to add to Jennifer's idea. In the beginning of the school year, as a staff, we were reflecting upon our data from the previous school year for our English language learners. And we all decided that we wanted to ensure that all of our teachers are using sentence frames with turn and talks in the classroom. And Jennifer and I have noticed that consistently happening in the classroom. But it's also really important to highlight that our teachers are doing so much more than that. We notice a variety of integrated ELD strategies, such as close reading strategies, using colors, using visuals.
Um, using colors, um, using visuals, vocabulary. They're really doing a great job of pre-teaching vocabulary before their lessons. Um, and some of these strategies came to us. Some of the strategies the teachers already knew and some of the strategies came to us through our recent PD with TCM, um, which I'd like to talk about later.
All right, goal three is, you know, our ELA and math. Um, you can see we maintained this year. We didn't necessarily go up, but we did maintain. Um, we're definitely seeing a discrepancy with our English language learners compared to our other students. This slide kind of shows you that they're holding steady in middle school. So what they're getting is work is 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 working. They're not losing in middle school. Um, this is the fall test, so it's hard to compare, but kind of my takeaway is that they're losing ground over the summer. I know summer school is only for, yeah, it's a money thing, but our students really do. That summer slide is is a real thing. Um, I added this slide because I am very excited to show this. For the last four years, you know, you've heard me talk about win, win, win. Well, that is why you see all the green in our phonics. So this is our third through fifth grade students. Pretty much every student is on grade level now in third through fifth grade in reading and they're high, as in decoding, I'm talking right. Um, and high frequency words and any student that's not has been identified and is either receiving RSP services, newcomer intervention or and also reading intervention throughout the day. And because of this, our upper grade teachers don't have to teach reading anymore. They're able to teach the content. And as all we, as we all know, if a student is focusing on decoding, they can't focus on comprehension. So we're seeing some phenomenal growth on our last iReady. And it's, I think a lot of that has to do with this. Math, we also helped study considering we had a new, new program. Um, this year, teachers are a lot more comfortable with it. So they're moving through the program faster to the students to know the routines. The center is already made, so it's, it's a lot easy, say easier, but it is a little, a little easier come this year. And again, you see the discrepancy with our English language learners. But as we know, math these days is heavy in language. This is going into middle school. You can see there's a big drop. I don't know if it was the new program. Um, but we're very confident that now that the kids are going to have consistency from school to school and across the grade levels that we're going to see. We're not going to see a decline. And again, the summer slide. So this year, um, we've done a lot of work around PLCs individually, but also schoolwide goals. One of them was a language target for every lesson and we're at a hundred percent and you know, if you've done an instructional site visit, they can test to that. When you go in a classroom, there is a, a language target or a learning target. And we've been focusing a lot on tier one practices. Um, as I mentioned, we have very highly dedicated teachers who are engaged in our staff meeting. They take the PD back and try it. They are following the cohesion model that Anna's put in place. Um, our grade levels all plan together. The classrooms you go into, they're doing the same thing with their own style, but they're all pacing and planning together. They reach out to resource teachers if they need support or counselor. It really, it really is a team effort. And one of our changes is we've really started to focus on our they're the yellow kids, kids are just one year below grade level. So our resource teacher is using Ufly, which is recently adopted. It's a tier one K two program and you can be used for intervention for three through five. So she's working with first through sixth grade students. And since school started, she has bumped up a hundred and three kids to grade level in six to eight weeks. So she has nine groups a day with three or four kids, pulls them, fills in those holes, assesses them, moves them back in. So we're, we're very excited about that. It's working very well.
Okay. All right. I'd like to share one of the most impactful efforts that we have done this year, I believe, is our integrated ELD coaching. Um, Anna Herrera and Catherine Rivera coordinated training for all of the coaches, which I was fortunate enough to be um one of the instructional coaches at Henry Ford. Um, I just can't express enough how much I learned from this. Um, studying and um practicing the TCM strategies created a schoolwide focus on best practices of integrated ELD. Um, Henry Ford upper grade teachers had the opportunity to plan a series of lessons and watch each other teach using Benchmark. Um, this has really created a culture of openness and excitement around lesson design. I love how the teachers, they share with me strategies and and that they are trying and they welcome me into their room to observe. Um, and I just want to acknowledge that for a teacher to open up their teaching practice, it takes a lot of vulnerability and trust. Um, and before the board, um, I'd like to thank the Henry Ford staff for their passion and their dedication for our students. They truly are a dedicated staff. Um, and teacher practices should not be isolating, but shared, reflect upon and celebrated. And I'm glad that we do that here at Henry Ford.
All right, and just to end, I just wanted to acknowledge a few things that I feel like I really appreciate this year, the instructional site visits, having the district come in and give us feedback. Just the conversations that are happening has been, it's, it's helped me grow immensely as a professional. Um, having a guest teacher to release these teachers for planning or whatever it is has been wonderful. And in addition to our staff, the families at Henry Ford, um, I've worked at a few sites. And they truly value diversity and care about everyone's child. Uh, whether it's volunteering or whatever it is, kid needs something, they do it. So I just also want to acknowledge how wonderful the families are at Henry Ford. That are listening.
And we, we at the end, I was at the last slide. Perfect. Um, thank you, Jennifer and Jennifer for that presentation. I promised I would never refer to two people with the same name as the plural. So I'm making sure that I stay true to that promise. Um, and thank you to your staff that's here. Uh, I see many of you out there. Uh, and I see uh, many online, so I appreciate the coming here and support. Um, I'm going to turn it to the board to see if.
To the Davids to respond to the Jeffs.
And with that, I'll ask trustee weekly to maybe kick us off with some questions and comments.
So thanks so much. I, I really appreciate the, um, the, the data here. I, I had asked a number of questions over email that got, uh, that got responded to. I really liked the uh, meet your neighbor night, just like the focused approach to seeing like, who is it that's not showing up? What are we going to do to get these kids to come? Everything from, do we need a bigger bus? Um, just, I, I, I think that, that really those kinds of approaches are what yield fruit. And so just, I, I want to commend you and the staff for, for going in and digging into that. So I liked a little bit about uh, helping to teach adults how to self-regulate when dealing with a kid who's poorly regulated, because that can be indeed uh, very frustrating. So thanks so much for your work.
Um, thank you for the presentation. Thank you, of course, to all the teachers that are always here. I believe you and I forget, maybe Clifford, or there was another school where they do bring a lot of their staff. Um, I appreciate that. Um, and of course, you know, late night and that you guys are very appreciated. Um, and so same as uh, David, I do want to say I appreciate the meet your neighbor night because it feels like you met them instead of expecting them to come to, you know, us when of course, like they said, transportation is a problem. So I do appreciate that. And I just want to, you know, say thank you for all the work that you guys have done. Um, again, to move the needle forward. Thank you.
I guess Jennifer, talking to the Jennifers. Um, thank you for presenting. It was great information. Um, the popular name. Um, I just had a couple, couple comments and I, I do like that you guys were able to really dig in to figure out the problem. We were able to solve something for you guys with the transportation. Um, are there any other kind of things along those lines that you were looking for in terms of support or help?
Well, we were really trying to understand, we realized we needed to understand the problem before we can move forward. So we really took a lot of time to really um pay attention to what the families were telling us when we were making our phone calls. Um, and when we plotted on the map, we just wanted to confirm that that is exactly, that was the problem that we were thinking. It was transportation. Um, we were giving the families bus passes, but our families are not comfortable putting their children on a Samtrans bus. They're elementary school students and so we didn't find that to be um a solution for us. Um, you know, we can keep on calling and we can say to explain the importance of attendance, but when our, we realize our parents understand the importance of attendance. They know that it's important. They're just, they just need help getting their children to school.
And I had a, um, maybe more for my own information, but um, I was looking at, I was wondering about the iReady and the CAST math targets. Maybe this is more of an Anna question. I was wondering why there was such a big difference in the target. Is that normal?
Yeah. So when we do the SIP says, um, the, they get their, their disaggregated and then all administrators can choose what their targets are going to be. Usually they stay within about five percent. Um, and so last year, uh, Jennifer, Ms. Knopf, I was saying, um, when we were looking at the data, she was looking at some of the targets. So she did have some high targets she wanted to achieve. Yeah. So they get to set them according to what they're seeing, what's happening at their site. So they get to put those targets individually.
I usually do ten percent. Yeah.
And then, yeah, and totally understand about the summer slide, but and we're doing iReady right now. Are we kind of looking like we're gonna kind of be closer?
Yeah, it's, you'll see a big difference when the scores come out, I think, district wide, but definitely at our site.
Thank you so much.
Um, I'm going to do that thing that I find annoying sometimes, but I'm just going to repeat a lot of the stuff that everyone has already said uh, to start, which is really, really appreciate all the work and then getting all the, seeing the staff come here and the support. It's just really helpful to get a sense of like everything that's going on there. Um, so thank, thank you for that. Also, same thing. Love the targeted approach to the problem solving on chronic absenteeism. I think I asked a question when, when I saw the slides of there's a lot that you guys are doing here. Um, I, what I would hate is for just constantly being like throwing everything at the wall and never getting a sense and just, it's not sustainable. And I'd love to hear the explanation of just like, yes, we did that. And then we were really data-based and thinking about how we do this and you went to the, the family. So just really thank you for doing that. Thank you for like solving that problem. Thank you for asking for the resource and thank you to Anna, the staff for like really addressing it. Um, obviously it's like a fundamental piece of, we need kids in school to teach them. So uh, thank you all for that. Then I do have a bunch of questions. No, not a bunch. I have some questions and honestly, they're more just about me understanding some of the pieces. I am still learning lots of the, the environment. So I think some of this will be probably a mixture of Anna and, and Jennifer and Jennifer. Um, but I'll start with the um, the chronic absenteeism. I just want to make sure I'm understanding what I saw on the slides, which I think one of the slides looked like we, uh, as of February this year, we're at twenty three and a half percent. Is is that right?
Yeah. And then Anna's data said twenty, so I think she may have had more current data. I made this slide a while ago.
So we take, we just sort of, sort of took a dipstick of February fourteenth, which is actually a month ago, possibly. So we take dipsticks as we're going and one of the things that we keep finding in um, the data with all school sites, we found a big dip December and January and even February. And then we're going back up again. So as we're looking at our monthly data, we keep seeing these ebbs and flows, but really going up. But the, when you're looking at the twenty three percent, twenty three point five on that, it is from that February fourteenth at that moment in time, because it's in real time.
Okay, maybe I'm, I might.
And then, okay, I'm trying to think the, I'm trying to look at the slides right now.
I think maybe I'm just misunderstanding, misunderstanding how it's calculated. I thought last time when we, when we talked about LCAP, basically if you're chronically absent, you, you can't unwind it as of now.
Correct. That's a chronic absentee. The one that's on here though, one of the things that we have is we have students who are chronically absent. And we have those that are trending and those that are the, it's yellow, it's like yellow, red and red. So we have three categories.
Okay.
And so any of those categories, so you have the chronic, right? And then you have those that are trending that could move into
Okay.
chronic. So those are always moving depending on if they continue to increase how many days are our absent.
So is the twenty three.
I think chronic absences are fluid because it's ten percent. So you might have five absences at fifty days, right? But then ten more days go by, now you're no longer in that category.
Chronic is a percentage. It's not ten bits. Oh, okay. Okay.
So twenty three percent of us is about a hundred kids.
Okay, that's super helpful.
And I forgot to mention, of that, twenty five percent of the students are special ed students. So it's a big chunk too, which is all other.
Okay.
All. And that's something we've been working with district wide um about how do we address our special education students? Who we are finding that are very chronically absent, because we have a number of them. It's across the district. Some sites more than others, but we've been, I know, um, we've been trying to really work with our attendance teams are working now, so bringing in our special education department to work together on how do we help support our special education. Is that some of them are really sort of a problem for us?
Good. Um, next topic, the school, the loved all the SEL stuff, positive behavior interventions. Do I, I know in the LCAP, we have um, a metric kind of measuring that through certain student surveys. Um, is do we have any sense, do we collect data on that at the school site level on any sort of regular basis or how's that?
Well, our counselor does surveys a couple of times a year. And in the past, we've had the um panorama and then we've taken our lower scores that were lower and the counselor and I would work together to dig deeper. We do track all of our referrals and sort them by location, date, all that too as well.
I guess my ultimate question is, all the stuff that we're doing on the front, like do we, do we see that there's improvement, that it's being effective?
Definitely, yes. Anecdotally more than anything.
Okay.
Reduction in referrals, I think speaks for itself.
And we're in the process of completing the California Healthy Kids Survey. So we're hoping to have that data soon as well. And that will be um, each school site will get their disaggregated data to add it into the, into their SIPs.
Do, is that taken all at the same time across schools?
It's, we have an open window. So we have, um, this year, we, this is our first year we're doing it where we are doing it from fourth through eighth grade. Fourth, fifth and sixth, we have to have parents opt in. Seventh and eighth grade, they can opt out. So it's a kind of a really uh, a system. So one of the things that we did this year, by the way, Henry Ford had a really good turnout because they did at the beginning of the year with permission slips. Um, and so we have, we can only um do the, the survey with the parent who the students have permission. And so we may have a little bit lower turnout next year. We're putting it into the renewal package every year. So we're now putting it in as part of that system. So that we're not trying to hand out um permission slips and get people to sign. So we're putting it as part of the registration renewal process over next year.
Okay. Two more, two more questions. That, that's it, I promise. And both technical. Uh, one of them is L tells and definitions that we're using. I think we were talking, I was going to Dr. Baker about this. My understanding was that the definition used on the dashboard is seven years? Okay. I assume then that what we're seeing here as the numbers are not the dashboard definition.
No, they're, they're at-risk kids. So the kids we must monitor. Um, there's, for example, a third grader means that they have been in school four years. So they're on that cusp. If we can't catch them up and wait till middle school, they will become that L tell by sixth grade. Um, that's why we now are starting to track that a little bit more even in our SIPs, because we all have to know who they are, what levels they are. We have to really identify the students so that we're not in the middle school having those high numbers. So it's really digging deeper now and looking at those kids and identifying them and figuring out who are they? How can we support them in integrated um, during the integrated time of our lessons? What do we need to do for those students so that we are making sure they're making progress of those students? The one thing with the ALPAC, um, that is the hardest part for our students who are third graders is that at third grade, each grade, each kinder, first and second grade, the cha, the test changes and then third, fourth, the fifth grade, it's the same test. And then in middle school is the same. So they do get, it does get harder. So when Ms. Knopf was talking about the preparation and test. they do get, it does get harder. So when Ms. Knopf was talking about the preparation and test prep that they do once, it really is to help those students understand what's being asked of them. So I think we're hope, very hopeful that all teachers are doing these practices now that they will prepare them. We're not doing it at the crunch time, like the test is coming and now we practice with them. We should be doing it along the way so that we can actually build those skills along the way. So that's one of the things we need to start monitoring and the state has been a big focus on our LTs.
Yep. Note that makes a bunch of sense and is great. Like, yes, let's prepare it. As, there's more. I just saw it. I was like, wait a minute. Something is a little, okay, that, that's super helpful. Um, and then the last question, and I don't, this might be a longer discussion. I am trying to make sure that I'm understanding on our LCAP and I guess on SIPs as well. When we talk about our iReady goal, uh, part of me, when I read it, thinks that it's worse. We were aiming to measure the growth within a year. So like fall diagnostic to spring summative. Is, is that what we?
I ready to.
I ready. Yeah, exactly. From the beginning to the end of the year. Yeah. Is that what we are, is that what the, that's what we're measuring? Okay.
That's what we're, our hope and measuring for the year to year. So one of the things with iReady.
One of the things with iReady, um, because from year to year, it changes grade level standards. So we can only, that's why we show fall to spring so that we can see whether we've grown or not. So when we look at our iReady, like what we're looking at right now, what we have to fact out, we've seen a lot of good growth. What we have to figure out, did we meet our 4% looking at the overall? And then the school sites have, will look at their own percentages to see how they as a, just as a school also disaggregated their data in their SIPs. So it is 4% as a total.
And iReady highly correlates with the CAS.
Well, well, it has in the past. Last year was an anomaly. We're hoping this year it will match.
Sorry, just to clarify, when we say 4% growth, what is the growth?
So if we look at our, if we look at our total iReady as a district, we would look at our percentage and then move that 4%.
Percentage of on grade level?
On grade level. What we, what we give is on grade.
Okay. Four percent from the beginning of the year as in the diagnostic?
Correct. We look at the beginning of the year to the end of the year.
Okay. I see, I see. Okay.
Yeah, because you can't do spring to spring.
Yep. Okay. Perfect. I was just, I
CAS, we can do spring to spring, but we can't, we can't do cohort to cohort, I should say.
Okay. I, I was looking at this, this slide that we've seen all the time of like the pilot fall diagnostic, year one, year two, year three, but that's not really what we are measuring in our metric. Okay. Perfect. All right. That is all. Thank, thank you.
You're welcome.
Very much.
Thank you. Thank you, ladies. Thank you. Thank you, Henry Ford staff. Thanks. Have a good night.
Wait, I have one, one quick, just, just real quick.
Skip right there.
Yeah, that's all right. Um, the one thing I just wanted to ask, I, because we have the, um, first of all, the format change was good, great for this presentation. I really liked having the SIPs goals in the presentation there. So thanks for adding that. I'm sure that you added that to the district. But like, are you, I think we asked this already, but are you, are you seeing, do you feel like you're on target for, with the data that you're seeing now? Cause we, you know, you have all sorts of like, you know, assessments that are going on in the school all the time.
We do. Yeah. I mean, we, we've got 25 new students this year. So there's always, you know, outliers, but in general, we're really are seeing a lot of growth with our students.
Awesome. Great. Um, that's great. Uh, and also I'd like, what a, what a case study for like really targeted interventions that win. Um, I, did you say three years ago it started? I can't remember when.
Yeah, this is year four.
This is year four. Um, it's just, it's a real lesson of like, yeah, focus on, you know, part of the instruction and it'll really make a difference. Like the phonics and sight words is just, I mean, that's remarkable what it's been able to do there. And it's a real reminder of like, hey, change in programs and interventions take time, right? It, it doesn't come in year one often. It doesn't come in year two. It might take a little bit of time, but we're going to see if it's the right intervention, if it's the right program. Um, we'll be able to see that kind of growth. And that was really impressive to see there. Unless of course it's Ufly. I don't know how it did that in six weeks, but that sounded amazing. Maybe it's
We, we were using Sound Partners and Phonics for reading.
No, not, not the phonics, but that reading intervention that you had said too.
That is also.
Yeah. Okay. Great. Um, the person. Yeah, that's what I imagined. Exactly. It is indeed. Yeah. Yeah. So thank you so much, Mustang community. Really appreciate the work that you're doing. And, uh, love the presentation and then Dr. Baker.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, staff members, all staff members who came this evening from Henry Ford. Thank you so much. Jennifer and Jennifer, great presentation, but one thing, and Jennifer Sanchez and I spoke about this earlier today. Um, the recess and the assistance in recess of, that's a different way of thinking it and how you flipped that. Um, and really looked at it differently where, yeah, there's a little bit of, um, how would I say this? Misbehavior in a manner in which needs to be taken care of, but you've taken a spin instead of, you know, you're going to do this and you're going to do that. No, we're going to go and we're going to have. And I think it's one of the PE plus people that you told me that works on this, or is it your guest teacher?
Guest teacher.
Guest teacher.
And our TOSA.
And your TOSA works on it where they're at a game, say it's four square, but during that time where they're playing four square, they're talking to the students about what, you know, they have done and how you can think about that differently. And what would you do next time? And you keep playing that game and then you let them go, have, have fun, have recess. And then if it happens again, they're back. What a different way of disciplining.
Not taking away recess.
I know I but this is a great way to look at it in a whole different manner.
Yes. And what I really love is, um, the student look, I know joy is part of our, you know, our vision, our mission statement and both students that, um, the both groups, the students smiling, the student is feeling, um, not feeling like they're being punished in any way. They know that it is like we're growing them and that we have this expectation. Um, like, for example, today I, I actually did this with two students who, who used a curse word. And it was a rainy day, a rainy day recess. It's not just the first time. This was like, you know, this, the reason they're with me. And, um, it was just so positive. And these two students who normally have conflicts were learning to get along because we were, when we got to the game part, I had them come, give a compliment to the other person every time it was there after it was their turn. And soon they were just naturally giving each other compliments and they're like, that was actually really fun. So.
Yeah. So thank you. That, that's great. I really, I really, um,
I want to end with one great anecdote. A first grader was trying to teach his friend how to get over fear of heights. So he had him go to the top of the play structure and jump. Yes. So I think he's more afraid now.
Well, thank you both so much and the staff. Thanks again.
Thank you, everybody.
And now we can apply. Thank you. Okay, let's keep things moving. Um, we're into the discussion items. Uh, we'll start with 12.1. This is the first reading and discussion of board policy and AR 3280. And this one's for sale of lease of district owned real property.
Um, thank you. We have a few, um, of these four policies tonight as our board policy committee is meeting and reviewing these in advance and then bringing, um, it to the board, of course. Thank you so much for the questions in advance about these various policies. I know Rick is more of the expert in this area. And so we were wondering if there were any questions we could answer regarding this first reading.
Anybody have questions that they wanted to discuss or didn't get answered? I didn't, I didn't personally have any questions on this policy. Sounds good. Okay. Let's move on to 12.2, which is first reading and discussion of BP 3540. And this one's transportation.
Yes, this one as well. And thank you for, at, for Vidal Duran being here tonight, our transportation manager. And of course, Martin Cervantes, our, our director of maintenance, operation and transportation. And Rick also worked, of course, on this, um, board policy review along with the board policy committee. I know there were a couple of questions about timelines and other, um, information that were asked. So I, I wanted to know if there was any other clarifying questions regarding transportation.
Any questions? No. And I don't see any. Um, I'll just say I, you know, again, like the first one, it's, you know, we're always trying to make these things up to date and um, with, with legal and, but I liken this one, and I know it didn't change the, um, just the way it prioritizes transportation services for really our most vulnerable services. So it's nice to see that stuff in our policies. Um, okay, let's move on to 12.3. This one's first reading and discussion BP and AR 51113 dot one, chronic absence intruency.
Yes. So this is an update and I, I do want to point out, and, and one of the trustees did inquire about this. It references this, uh, recovery plan that Antonio Perez, our director of student services is currently working on, in fact, attending a very important meeting this week. So that plan is coming that will go in effect on July 1st, uh, but so I don't have anything specific to share on that. However, many of the strategies have at least been considered or worked on so far. So he's hoping to gain some new ideas about what this can look like moving forward after July 1st. Any other questions that we can answer?
I don't have questions, but I do want to say that what I appreciated about this readings this time around, maybe you guys didn't notice it, but I know that you're not pointing it out. Is the fact that we're adding the color because in the past is just so, I appreciate that. So thank you so much.
Well, kudos to David Lee that, um, that brought that as a, as a new twist on our board policy review. So it's great. Yeah, thank you. It's nice to see that the differences in such a bold fashion.
Yeah. And thank you. Um, the, the one question I had on this that I did just want to share and air was that the board policy is really stresses early intervention, um, you know, wraparound services, um, you know, community collaboration, but the, the regulation really looked like it, it read like it was more punitive. So thank you for clarifying that that's not punitive, that that's actually there to help support the student, particularly if they need some of the legal services.
Yes. I think in the past, it has been more punitive and we're moving away from that, um, in, in years past. So part of this additional new change, I think will be new and exciting moving forward in that regard. We'll have more changes that are more positive.
I'll just note one minor thing that I requested that I hopefully will, um, be in the second reading is just a change in the last paragraph to clarify that the board will receive at least annually reports on these things, which I think we already do. Uh, but it's more just to codify that, um, but just pointing that out.
Yeah, thank you. It's going to move from the term periodically review to at least annually because it is reflected in the SIPs, the LCAP district wide, and then of course the board reports like we saw tonight. But yes, that change will be coming actually at second reading. So thank you for mentioning that.
Yeah, thanks. That's a good change to put in there. We do hear it almost every other board meeting with the board, with the school report. So, but it's good to have it in the policy. Um, okay. With nothing else, then we can move on to the consent agenda. Um, we're going to improve them all with one motion. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Um, next up is our action items. And so this is 14.1. It's adoption of Imagine Learning illustrative math and curriculum for grades six through eight.
So, um, I know that Kendall's also on the line. If you guys have any further questions, but we are asking for adoption. I know there was a question um, about what we're seeing with our data. Um, we know, um, that with this year, we have had a lot of consistency, um, much more in our math. And we are seeing that we are very hopeful that our math scores are going to go up with this consistency. And so we know that the middle school, this is a change, um, just in curriculum, but some of the practices are still the same as what they were doing in the past. So we're hoping that we won't have such a big of a slide as we have in elementary because it's a change of way we were really teaching in the primary years. But we're hoping that you guys will adopt this. So we can move forward and get moving forward for next year.
And as a reminder, we had a presentation on this forty-five days ago, somewhere around there. Um, and it's been on public, uh, public access here at the district for people to review. Yeah. So literally, literally right back there. Um, so does anyone have questions, um, since the last time we discussed this?
And it seems like we were very thoughtful in piloting a couple of different curriculums, selected this one. Uh, the rollout for kinder through fifth has gone pretty well, and this is an extension of that. So it just seems like a pretty natural thing to do to me.
Anyone else comments? Yeah, I agree. It's nice to have the extension of the same curriculum through K through middle school. Um, so this is an action item. Uh, so if there's a motion to approve it.
I move we approve this curriculum.
And a second? Are all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're on to 15.1, um, board and superintendent reports. We'd like to start.
Uh, I think it's our last meeting, had the superintendent's advisory committee, which was very helpful, talked about some of the workforce, how we've seen considerations that we've already, uh, had the privilege of hearing about, but it was good to get that to wider audience. And then also talked about the importance and benefits of the Sequoia Health District. So that's very helpful for me personally, and hopefully for others on the committee. And then I also went to a site visit at Hoover, which was great. Um, frankly, learned quite a bit both about the student population, the staff population, and even just the setup of the school itself. Um, which is, it was, I think it's very good to see it. It's great that we get a lot of engagement in person from certain schools here. Um, I think it was a good reminder for me that there are other schools that aren't always present, right? And that also have needs. And it did strike me when I was speaking to Lupe, that there's a, I think she prides herself, it seems, or maybe the community prides itself on being a, um, self sustaining, you see a problem, you take care of it, kind of peace or that mindset. Uh, which is always helpful, but also I think for me, uh, it's always good reminder of, you know, it's good to know that these are other issues that are popping up because that impacts how we, how I view the, the district as a whole. Um, so overall, it was a very, uh, good visit for me.
Better for her, Cecilia?
So I didn't attend the English Superintendent Advisory, but I did attend the Spanish one at Hoover. And we had actually a really big turnout. Um, and then we also had, um, Richie and Maria Wundes, um, to talk to our parents about some of the stuff that our children or the students get, like the bread and I didn't get any of the stuff. Oh, it was bagels. And so it has less sugar than other, um, items that we used to purchase before. So there's a lot more of the, um, oh my God, I just lost my train of thought.
The nutrients are definitely different. There's a lot less carbs in the types of, like, um, the bagels that they're, the kids eat now. It has a lot less sugar, a lot less carbs than what we were giving previously. And then he had a demonstration, not a demonstration, he had a plate full of different types of fruits that the kids are getting that are seasonal.
Yeah. And like one of the parents was actually saying, oh, I'm actually very, um, grateful that they were offering avocado and her kid loves avocado. So, you know, that, that was great. So that was it for me.
Yeah, I don't know. I didn't need to report either.
The only thing that's different for myself is, uh, today, uh, Jorge and I met with, um, the Faith in Action group. It's a Latino group that has been, um, meeting with different, uh, immigrants throughout the county. And they wanted information on what we have done so far. And I gave them, um, the information on the dates and participation rates that we had. They would like to do, uh, another one with, uh, ourselves. Um, in regard to the other pieces of support that are available at this point in time. So the availability of if, um, someone is here and they're here uh, illegally, but are not going to work and they need assistance with rent and so forth, they have an outlet for that. If there's an, if they are needing some, um, legal assistance, there are now additional attorneys that are available to assist. So Jorge and Michelle, uh, Michelle Remond, Michelle Griffith, Enrique and myself will meet to determine, uh, when we will have this meeting, that last meeting, that last week of March, again, all done in Spanish. Um, we showed them what we had presented. And some of the information we presented was more than what they had. So we're going to combine our information and we'll probably do one in person at Hoover and then I'll do one online. Um, because if you, I, I know Cecilia, you know this, but we had a request from parents that in person, not too sure I want to attend that, but I'll be more amenable to coming to online. And that's where we had close to 200 parents online. So, and they agreed also. So it was really good to meet this group. They have met, um, with a couple of our school sites. Uh, but I want to make sure that, that this group is also aware of our community school coordinators, which we talked a lot about during our meeting. And so, um, I'm, that's why I'm having Michelle, uh, Griffith come into play with this group also when we set these meetings up, because I want our community school coordinators to be there.
That's good for me.
All right. Sounds good. Um, so then we're moving on to correspondence. All right, sounds good. Um, so then we're moving on to correspondence. Um, I think you already responded to the speakers about the emails that we got for TK. Um, other correspondence that. Sure, that maybe. Girls about it. Okay. Um, so then it's other business and suggested items for the future agenda. Here none. All right, uh, board meeting.
Actually, I just had a question for you.
Okay.
You brought it up at the last board meeting. I don't know if you and Dr. Baker had a time to discuss this. You had requested a closed session for the governance team performance self-evaluation.
Right.
For uh. I think the last board meeting in June.
I was winging it, but yeah, that's what.
So it cannot be a closed session. It has to be during open session. So do you have an idea of when you want to have that?
Um, let me look at the calendar. I'll get back, I can bring it to the next meeting. We can talk about it then.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Sounds like.
Okay, great. And then uh, that changed. Yeah, so there were no other changes. That was it. Okay, then we're at adjournment. Uh, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thanks. Thanks, everyone.